Welcome everyone to Greenfield City Council. Nice to have you here tonight. Please rise for Councilmember DeWolken. That was gracious.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. Dear God, thank you for your most beautiful weekend with the beautiful snow. And thank you for protecting those who needed shelter from the snow. And a beautiful opportunity for all of us to enjoy your most glorious gifts. Please give us guidance and wisdom to best represent the citizenry. And for all the leaders here today in the audience, listening and throughout our community, please get us all invited to do what is best in your plan and for Greenville. Amen.
Amen.
Our pleasure. And just say it's nation and the business of the team and justice. All right. So Camilla, is that from your shop? Or is that communication there? See, I've eaten shots of the Liberty Bridge with the ice on it. This is where the God wipes out. No, that's not. Really nice pictures.
Uh, Senator Poleroff. Councilmember John DeWolken.
Yeah.
Councilmember Larry Zemming. Councilmember Kate Ripson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Rose. Councilmember Russell Stone. Councilmember Dorothy Dow. Here. Mayor Knox White.
He had the minutes of December ninth, twenty twenty-four, which will be stampede as submitted unless there are injections or changes. Seeing none, they are so approved. Let's see. Six A is a little bit. How do you want to handle?
Yes, sir. Six A is twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the third and fourth agenda items. And as council may be aware, we evaluate and audit our records at the end of each year. In twenty twenty-three, we have one outstanding item. If it does not pass council's agenda, if it shows up as tabled, deferred, or any of those measures. In twenty twenty-three, we had an item that came on council's agenda. It was over and on another date or time. And during twenty twenty-four, the item was. Item is sitting out there in clear records. We are presenting it to the city. And it was an earliest from then, two of our sections in our code of rule that says the development code. And it was scored back in one in twenty twenty-three. Unless there's an objection, it will bring the item of the record by tonight's minutes.
Okay. Any questions to the clerk on that? Okay. A few folks have signed up to speak to us. Remember, we have a minute clock up here. And if you're speaking, please do not, somebody else already has told us. We appreciate that. Jack Logan, are you here? Jack Logan, okay, I didn't see you up there almost. Thanks, Jack.
Listen, thank you, my name's Jack Logan. I live in fifty-fifty-one, Hove, in West Row in Greenville County. Back in June of twenty twenty-three, this city council hired a city manager. And she was a female. And she is a female. And um, that's about uh, didn't even keep a saying. So I sent her and the deputy city manager, Mr. Mann, he's a male. They had I, I asked her different questions with such as first, like you seen, when she sees if she could handle that and get different things. And she told me she could. So when I started observing her, it was no good. And when I would dial in the early mornings and I would see different things that's going on in the city that shouldn't be going on. And I would email her about one time. She not respond and got the problems satisfied. And if I didn't doubt, this city hired, have hired the best city manager ever. Because she responds, she called back and then goes to talk to the community about Shannon. And I spoke to Ms. Fleming the other week and I told her what we, by respecting her, it haven't been two years, but him through Mr. Mayor, once I think I told you and you said, yes, Jack, she is a good, how she do it, she does it. And then learning that she's a wife and a mother, you can't ask for any more. She's better than I am getting that early in the morning responding. The last time I called her, emailed her, it was about South Wokes and Roger Floyd. And Ronas and Walker and the South Wokes was blocked. And she got on the that morning. And she represent all people. And I just want to say thank you, Shannon, for being the great city manager and continue to help this city council to continue to make Greenville the best city in the United States of America.
Thank you, Jack.
Did that three minutes too. Right up to the edge. Okay, thank you. Mr. Nacho Zagat, Mr. Gabar, excuse me. Mr. Gabar's not here. Uh, Mr. Dahawata? Not here either. Okay. Not here. Mr. Thornton. Class Thornton.
Last three. I was at second Avenue, nine fourteen, Galvez Street. I like to sing, you gotta deserve something. You gotta bring around, you can have a good job, something, keep improving, tell everybody that you keep up. Uh, we talked about a little bit how, why somebody's not having a happy year. Last time I spent with city council, a person was a victim from the court. Their virtue put out in pain. And now some were planted out who, I was very good with them, put out these. But people who value you say, and one for you, I say, a good property, my first, believe. Whereas one of this country, why does just to buy a much property that's been passed to you? Because they're extremely good, bro, where they're this house. But they're builders, they're down of all that, they're doing, they really big dog foods, have large amounts. But people are very healthy. What about the peasants? My partners might be the short-term women, people still have houses. I think my best child family, they got homes built down. It's true. My people has that thing. We lost our home. So I'm not a bad special acquaintance, we just afford them housing. I also support this RNA's, so we don't need to back partners. Well, that's really, I think about the family who came to me and said, we're working out my home. I think about the family, so we can sit so alone. So I can have a house to raise my children, so they can have a flat yard to build, so I can have a backyard to bring the women. I said, well, all you care about is what the developers have to say. If the developers want, it's because they have money. All they're about is their house, they're about the people, they don't know how much money they make off their own property. And I would say, well, conscious city council will let you, tell them how you'd like to start a family, you can't have a child in the back. They're not willing. Of houses and homes that they would want to live in. And I said, let's don't sell our souls, but make them a right place. Thank you.
Thank you.
And God bless you.
Number nine is uh.
The purpose here is to amend the twenty-fourty accommodation plan for the state accommodations tax funds to develop.
Okay. Who's gonna?
One, I go.
Be it Matt?
Yes, Amber Stewart.
Okay. And Amber Stewart is here to speak in favor. Okay, thank you.
Amber Stewart, sixteen fifteen Wade Hampton Road. Good evening, Mayor White and all the council members. I'm Amber Stewart, the Advocacy and Community Engagement Director with Greenville Housing Funds. I won't take up too much of your all's time this evening. I just wanted to express my gratitude for your continued leadership and effort and of the staff and the consultants in the developing of the housing impact analysis. You all were truly ahead of the curve with utilizing the local accommodations tax revenue to support workforce housing, particularly with last year's acquisition of the downtown property in the Haney Serene neighborhood. This will play a huge role in preserving the community and providing workforce housing. And further, you continue to lead the state in maximizing resources and notably by leveraging the state's portion of the accommodation tax through the passing of this proposed housing impact analysis. This report provides crucial data about the current needs, the costs and wages in our housing market, as well as the growth of our community. It aligns with closely with the city's vision of the affordable housing goals as outlined in Greenville twenty forty plan. This analysis offers an opportunity to leverage several hundred thousand dollars in the state accommodations tax revenue, which will support not only affordable housing, but also the tourism industry and the essential workers who make our community thrive, our food and hospitality workers, our police officers and retail employees. Greenville Housing Fund, along with the Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition, fully supports the passage of the housing impact analysis and will look forward to working with the city on the development of the workforce housing. And thank you again for your time and leadership this evening.
All right, thanks very much. Okay, we have a next to the Greenwood Party Board of Trustees.
Do we have anyone else in some position?
Nobody else signed up to speak. Anybody else speaking on that topic?
February, did you have comments or? Okay.
Okay. The nomination from the legislative delegation asking for a consensus is to name Edward H. Stahl to that large position for appointing as the Greenville Health Authority Board of Trustees. Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor of Mr. Stahl, say aye. Close, two, three, and one abstention. Okay. That's licensed. Senate agenda is up next.
Move Danzow.
Second, motion, second on the consent.
Councilmember DeWolken. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Rose. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Agenda fifteen A, first.
And Mr. Resonant, excellent zero, a four, a third property located at McCall Street and Dollar Street from R N X B to point A.
Second, motion, second.
Question.
I want to. Married up to him. Present that.
Any questions on this item?
Um, this is my screen, though. So I'm separating each one if we have a view these night. All right, so this has gotten running and go from one unit to four units max. And so, which would imply an opportunity for missing middle housing. Do we have any idea of any intent on this grouping of parcels?
Councilmember Dow, they attended the meeting and planning mission and their intent is to.
But is it, is the entity that came to the project preview meeting, do they only own those two parcels or are they, is this parcel of the whole block?
They just own the two. Austin corrected me, they're the applicant, they don't have yet. I wanted to get them reset first.
Okay. But we don't see this as a trigger for more around in that area and the rest of the RNA.
Not just time, but there are, there is RNA throughout that block, around that area.
I have to see some opportunity for smaller lots so we can build houses.
I'm getting more density on those two.
Good thing. Okay, clerk, call well.
Councilmember DeWolken. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Rose. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
T B.
And all the services on Fox One Zero, located at three one six Ashley Avenue, R N A to R N X B.
Mr. Mayor. So, sorry. Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Okay. Yes, for working. Um, I, I'm just a couple of comments on this. So when I became aware of the project, probably a year ago, I reached out to the business person of their owner, the person in charge of a particular block here, business lot, and also to the neighbors along that stretch. And one of the first things I said to the business owner is I said, hey, make sure you reach out to every single one of those neighbors. And he did. And those neighbors are really supportive, excited about this project and suing project because it really is a, a bright spot on Ashley. And if anyone's familiar with that end of Ashley, we've got all kinds of problems going on with crime and trespassing, et cetera. And by the redevelopment of this property will coincide nicely with the redevelopment of Ashley at that end. We're going to be putting a gateway, Clint's here, he tells us we're going to be repairing, lighting, vegetation, and this coincides really nicely. But I think for our purposes here tonight, the business owner did an excellent job of outreach to the neighbors to let the neighbors know what was going on and gaining that support. So he made my job very easy as well. Thank you, Mr. Ma.
I have a question. I mean, we had a conversation about this, and you and I had a conversation. This has been the daily topic. Did this property owner, did they present anything of the PPM as a reason?
Yes, Councilmember Dow, they, they did go to the project meeting, I believe there was an article in a local media paper about what they were. And it's a good thing as far as we're from our viewpoint, because they will improve the property. And the R N X B has that nice transition zoning between commercial use and neighborhood, that commercial flex in our residential, so that would be their office.
So the conversation we had earlier, talked about with the new zoning, with that intent, we're going to have to demo what's there, I assume. What's there on that lot now? Are they looking to rent it?
I was under the impression it's a renovation. I don't think we have any plans at this point submitted.
Okay. Um, will they, how does this work in terms of the most recent ordinance we passed? You know, are they going light for light, the light for less? And will the new code apply in this case as they make it office space? In other words, outfit requirements, I guess is what I'm.
They will be under the new code, that is correct.
And will they be required for significant upfits? Because to me, they are making it a lot better than what's there now based on the visual. But I don't know if that, you know, if it's a radical move in terms of what is being used for now in terms of use versus what they're proposing to use it for.
Um, we, as far as I know, we don't have the plans in yet, as I said, but the use, I think, is the use appropriate here? Is the question.
Well, no, I mean, I guess I'm looking for, I wouldn't, I would, I would expect some upfitting on this based on what's there now versus making that into office space.
It'll have to comply with all of our standards.
Okay. Last question, and we had a discussion on this. This is, this is like right next door to those homes, very close by. Um, in other areas of the city, when things like this have gone in, there's, there's been sort of a aftermath of concern about lighting in terms of lighting in the public space, which I assume they're going to have to put in. And I just want to be sensitive to the neighbors in close proximity. The light cast in their lots is going to be more than it is now, which is a good thing for security. But I just want us to be sensitive about learning from other neighborhoods as we're having something like this.
Mayor Douglas, I'll, I'll respond. I agree, and obviously a sensitivity. One thing that I really liked about the developer of this property is he and his whole family were born and raised in McGowan neighborhood. And so, as opposed to, nothing against people from out of town, but this person lives here, easily reachable. So I think that if we demonstrate those concerns to the property owner, I think that they would, I think they'd be sensitive to it as well.
No, I mean, I think that's right.
I think it's, I know this is in the ordinance, but I think, I think they'd be willing to go the extra mile as well.
I, and I trust that explicitly about them. However, once we rezone, they have the ability to sell to whoever. And then that buyer has the benefit of this rezone. So I'm cautiously out there.
Very good.
And Councilmember Dow, also, I think the note is some transition to development code, that would be R N X, we're building R H, some of the things that there to do some transition, but then escaping.
Okay.
I would definitely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any questions?
Councilmember DeWolken. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Rose. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Aye. Fifteen C.
Let me strip my favor, then, for thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars in the Missland West Grants Fund for the F twenty twenty-four Edward V. Justice Assistance Grant Program. So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Any questions to the chief about that?
Councilmember DeWolken. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Rose. I'm sorry. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Fifteen D.
And in this trip, we're paid two million one thirty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars in the capital project fund for additional proceeds related to the issuance of the main pool infrastructure bond to.
Second.
Motion, second. Maybe we'll set on that there.
So just based on the favorable interest rate, as well as bond premium received, we had more slightly over two million dollars available for the project fund. It's a, it's a positive story from the NIB to debt issuance.
Okay. So my question is, that's almost a ten percent, but more than a ten percent bonus on top of what we were expecting. And I don't want bonuses in misuse. It should have been eighteen million, but we got twenty million because of the.
Correct.
Hot fever bomb market. Does that additional two million get allocated to cover the projects that are already scoped in the NIB? Or do we foresee the ability to expand the scope of the NIB given the extra?
So projects that originally had some shortages from, that were anticipated as part of the NIB, and then with resurfacing, carrying the, the bulk of any, any additional funds. So, but it's truly going to many of the Cleveland, I'm sorry, many of the park shortages.
Okay.
Funding shortages.
Great.
Will we get a copy of what it, of any changes because of the extra two mill?
Absolutely. And it's, it's part of the ordinance, but I'm happy to summarize with, and connect the project titles with those project numbers.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Can I, clerk, call well?
Councilmember DeWolken. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Rose. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
T E.
Just repaid five hundred thousand in Missland West Grants Fund for the twenty twenty-four Land and Air Conservation Fund Award.
Second.
Second. Court, call well?
Councilmember DeWolken.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Rose. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Aye. Very good. Fifteen F.
But we're just, the job, the impact analysis in order to facilitate the use of the state accommodations tax funds for the development of. So moved.
Okay, second. We had a discussion about this in workshops, I'm turning back, but.
Yep.
It's okay. Clerk, call well?
Councilmember DeWolken. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Rose. Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Aye, thank you. Okay, two resolutions, sixteen A.
A resolution to provide for certain certifications regarding the building on your site located in the east side of South Carolina, our code sections, well, that's explored, that's next, eh? So moved.
Second. Second. Paul, say aye. Close, please have it. Sixteen B.
A resolution to conditionalize the execution of consent to certain agreement.
So moved.
Motion, second. Y'all need further information from, okay. Paul, say aye. Close, please have it. Abstained. Okay. That's the manager, Lord Wayne, manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to thank our city staff for all of their work during our last weather event, or started over the weekend. We started prepping for that early last week, started actually putting vines on the roads on Tuesday. And because of the collaboration of the senior leadership team and just the dedication of city employees, I think that we had a really uneventful weather weekend and that everyone was able to enjoy it. So thank you to all of our team for their outstanding work. The pictures that you see come from our communications team. Scott got out early Saturday morning and took pictures at sunrise, which was really wonderful to show you all the beautiful photos of the snow event. And the other big thing that I have to announce is that we have completed our debris pickup, our vegetative debris pickup. I'm trying to find, but I didn't.
He's over there. But we're there, yeah.
I'm fairly confident that we are the first in state that have completed this. So I think I'm okay to say that. I believe, yeah. That's what you later comes on. And we have started less restoring our temporary hall site that y'all may have seen over on Airport Road. And we have completed that. If anyone who's out there hears this and says, wait, I still have something at my property, just contact Public Works and we will take care of it. We still have the Marshall property to finish their pickup and that will be a joint effort to be able to get those cleaned up through our codes enforcement team and our Public Works team. But all of the residential pickup has been completed. And the final numbers is that the contractor removed four hundred thirteen thousand three hundred forty-eight cubic yards of vegetative debris, hauled out a hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty cubic yards. The city staff done our own fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-one cubic yards of vegetative debris, a grand total of four hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine cubic yards. And so, just for comparison, I think it was about forty-one thousand during the ice storm of oh five. So that's a huge, significant number and amount. I'm really, really proud of the work that our team has done to be able to accomplish this goal for our community. And one of the things that we are excited to share with you at your retreat in February is the complete timeline of how we handle parking and hauling. And just giving everyone really our case study of how we managed that event situation. We used it again this past weekend. We did the same things for this weekend that we did back in hauling. Obviously, we didn't move, it wasn't near the event, but we replaced all of the same steps, all of the same communication. And we're really excited to share that with you in a few weeks. That's all I have tonight.
Somebody, one thing there, I actually shared this with the, the conversation today, but I won't share it, not only with our city manager, but the entire staff team that's assembled and alongside my colleagues, who I know each of you know this to be true, but as a member of council, I really can't go anywhere any day without some member of the citizenry stopping me and thanking the city of Greenville for all the incredible, to clear up, really, so much so that I got to call at one o'clock today for that big purpose. So here it is, thirteenth of January, but it just demonstrates what a wonderful, magnificent arduous job we're still appearing time. Citizens of Greenville still greatly appreciate the effort. So.
One thing that's great written about all of this country, certainly natural disasters, southwest, east, everywhere, and of course, one going on now, but it's really brought to the forefront that some local governments are physically and in terms of their organization, personal, they're not dysfunctional. And it sure matters when it, I mean, it does matter, but it really matters. And we're seeing that play out around the country and we can be very proud that in Greenville, yeah, we got the job done. We do know it and they appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm very proud of y'all's leadership and then the work of, of our staff team. I mean, we have so many wonderful staff members that are dedicated to this community each and every day and just, it shines throughout the entire organization. And so, thank you very much. And, you know. And, you know, tonight, we had a good example of when we talk about fiscal responsibility, you know, because of our bond ratings is how we're able to have the two million dollar bonus that we're instead of paying towards interest rates, we're actually putting towards real projects which matter for our community.
Yeah, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.